I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 5th meeting of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners to order, please stand for the pledge, remain standing for a prayer.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, as we gather today, we praise you for this meeting and your purpose for it. Let us remember that where two or more are gathered in your name, you are here. Please make sure our plans reflect your will. Lift our eyes to see you today and let the Holy Spirit help us translate your commands. Give us received strength and godly courage to obey you. Only you know what lies ahead. You are our good Father, just and righteous. Let your peace rain down on us today as we seek to serve our community. In Christ's name, amen.
All right, first item on the agenda, opening reading of bids. I believe there are any. Move on to reports and requests. First, Board of Commissioners, first item is the Accounts Payable Docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, the second one is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have a reappointment to the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. I will now open up nominations.
Nomination, I'd like to nominate John Shalil.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations. And we have a motion, a second, to reappoint John Shalil to the Alcohol Tobacco Beverage Board. All those, yes.
A discussion on the motion?
Sure.
Thank you. For, we had, Commissioners had a meeting last week regarding a future appointment to the HPC, the Stark Preservation Commission, and we agreed to be more open, like South Bend and Mission Waukegan, to draw on the greater pool of people. So I believe our staff has sent, we had sent out a press release asking those who would like to serve on the HPC Board, the Stark Preservation Commission, to send a res, application, a cover letter and resume by March 1st. And that, because some boards by state statute are, try to be equal in partisanship, that would be a democratic seat. So this appointment is not, has not been advertised. Did it need to be advertised, Counselor?
For the...
For the Alcohol Board?
To appoint?
To appoint?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let me just make those two points clear and known, thank you.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, or all those in favor, please, of reappointing Bill Shalil, John Shalil, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution R. 2C 2019, establishing major bridge fund. Please state your name and address for the...
My cam is San Jose County Auditor with offices on the second floor. I'm requesting that you consider reestablishing the rates for the major bridge fund, just by a little bit of history for the general public. For years, practice was to set the fund at a certain rate and then that rate would stay stable. So twenty years ago, it was set at around three cents for a hundred dollars of net assessed value for homeowners. It brought in sufficient money for not only ongoing maintenance, small maintenance of these major bridges, bridges of over 200 feet, but it was, the Commissioners back then were able to establish a long-range plan to rehabilitate bridges that needed more extensive work on them. The state legislature, in its wisdom, and maybe this is a good idea because it forces local governments to become more accountable, so that if you don't undertake to reestablish those rates on a timely basis, those rates are going to decline. So our rate has declined to about 1.8 cents for a hundred dollars of net assessed value, and that has led to a diminution of funds in, in said fund, so that our county engineer is not able to do the requisite ongoing maintenance and to undertake a long-term process of rehabilitating our bridges. So I think it'd be a good time, this is the third time we've tried to do this, to reestablish that, that fund at that rate, at 3.3 cents for a hundred dollars of net assessed value. This would provide us with the requisite income to start to maybe build up a reserve where the county engineer will be able to come up with a long-range plan to take care of our infrastructure. I'm gonna, you know, she was going to come up and speak for a little bit. I know Mr. Dalton will come up and speak and talk about the impact on, on our property ta, our taxpayers. It is, it is going to lead to some increased taxes for folks, but it's going to, as Mr. Dalton points out, be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10 to 20 bucks a year for many. And I can't speak for all residents of San Jose County, but I'm gonna, I think it's incumbent upon us to, for, you know, to, to, it makes sure that we have the requisite and good infrastructure to ask them to, to consider paying that. I think it's a worthy investment. It's one of the main things that county government, all government does, is take care of public safety and infrastructure. It's a reasonable thing to do. And if we don't act, the rate is going to continue to drop and we're going to, I think we need to be good stewards of our infrastructure, and this is one of the things that we need to do, and I think it's a small sacrifice to ask. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clark and Mr. Dalton, and they can talk about the impact that it would have on their programs. Thank you.
Commissioner Steve Dalton, Sender and Company, offices in Maryville, Indiana, financial advisor to the Council and the Commissioners. I agree with the Auditor in his recommendation and request that you approve this resolution to reset the cum, major bridge rate from point 180 per hundred to point 033 per hundred. When we start talking about tens of thousands of a decimal point, sometimes it gets a bit confusing. So let me attempt, I think you may have a document I sent you last week, let me attempt to kind of talk in terms of typical homeowners, people that live in their homes, homestead homeowners, on a $200,000 market value home with deductions, standard deductions and additional deductions, and that assessed value would be about $98,000. And that $98,000 net assessed value would indeed increase, as the Auditor suggested under this proposal, by $13.75 per year, beginning in 2020, with the tax bills that would go out in April and be due in May of 2020 in two parts, first half in May and second half in November. We could argue about the relative size, whether $13 is a large amount for a homeowner and whether that, that is a priority as we, as we look at infrastructure, and that's something that's more subjective and you're the policymakers. I would point out, as we look over the last five years of tax rates, it might be important to think in terms of a range. Five years ago, the tax rate that was attributable to the entire county, all of the operations of the county, was point 7058, or 71 cents per hundred of assessed value. We've, we've declined over the last five years, mostly because assessed values have increased and we've become more fair in our assessed valuing of properties in the county, and also because last year we paid off the jail bonds, which was an important project. Those jail bonds, though, were paid for by property taxes and were a large component of San Joseph County's property tax. So this year, in 2019, that rate has declined by four cents. Again, a small amount, four cents per hundred is $40 per year over the last five years. So the entirety of the tax bill of a taxpayer in San Joseph County over the last five years has declined $40. We're asking that it be allowed to increase back into that range, still less than it was five years ago, by 13 to $20, depending on the value of the property. I could answer questions, or you could ask Jessica questions about the specifics of the use of this fund.
Any questions for Mr. Dalton?
Oh, yes, I have a few. Mr. Dalton, I think some people understand that if there was to be a tax increase, not everybody would be paying an increase.
That's true.
Because of circuit breaker, people probably within the city limits or most town limits would not have an out-of-pocket increase, is that correct?
That is totally true.
Okay. And for those entities in the city limits and in the towns that are at the circuit breaker caps, that would not have an in-pocket increase, it would shift the current taxes they pay where they go.
True, that is true.
And I think the Tribune had a very good article last week regarding that, about how schools, you know, transpo, the library, airport, current voluntary fire departments, township fire departments, potentially any future township or fire territories, that everybody would have to surrender dollars for this fund.
That is entirely true. I would only point out to balance that statement that those entities, except for schools, which don't have the right to do so, have also increased their commiserate cum rates. Over the last 10, 12, 15 years, while we have not, the cities and the towns and the townships have increased their cum rates. So they've protected their capital improvement potential to our detriment over the last 10 or 15 years, and if anything, we're meeting them halfway.
Have you seen on the news that New Corral is looking at potentially starting a new fire territory?
I have, I've actually discussed that with them a couple of years ago. I didn't know that they were doing so again this year.
Thank you. And we're, so now you are aware, was you aware that the South Bend Tribune had several articles and other media about the South Bend School Corporation desperate for money, that they may even try a referendum?
Yes.
Trying to get additional tax money?
Yes.
So with all these concerns with other people, that, and those are just the people that would not have a tax increase, all those entities would suffer, but in your, but also all the county entities would suffer as well. The levy for the health department, the money for parks, all those would go down as well, correct?
They would. It's very, very small amounts, but I will, I will agree that there are slivers of increases and circuit breaker to all property tax funds.
Yes, and that would include general fund?
Absolutely.
Which is every department, prosecutor, the sheriff, everyone. If, with the assessed values going up because of inflation and just natural growth, even though the percentage goes down, the tax rate goes down, in theory, you can still make more money in taxes, such as the Laffer curve on income taxes.
Yes, as, as all boats rise, the percentage becomes a larger piece.
Thank you. And that with regards to the citizens who are at the caps, and the citizens who aren't at the caps, those probably outside of city and township, or city and down village entities, people with five-digit zip codes, those people would probably actually have a tax increase.
Many of the residents in unincorporated San Joseph County would have something between the number you see here, which is the max value, and the tax impact, and zero, depending on when they hit the cap.
In, in the past, former county councilman Jamie O'Brien, you remember working with him?
I do.
I believe he's an attorney and a CPA?
I think so.
Okay. Did you have the choi, chance to read today's Voice of the People by him?
I did not.
Well, I'm gonna read it for you, just a portion of it. He says, "Please, pretty, pretty, pretty please refrain from increasing property taxes in reference to this." He uses three pretties. That's pretty strong for, would you consider that strong language for Mr. O'Brien?
It's entirely subjective, but it is strong language.
Thank you. That's all I'm gonna ask for you, Mr. Dalton.
Thank you.
You've been very kind. I, and I do, you asked questions, Mr. Dalton, I do have a couple of questions for the Counselor. I might as well get them out of the way, and, because again, I think this whole tax is wrong, for those who haven't figured that one out yet. Counselor, I don't think this, this public hearing on this tax was legally advertised and properly advertised. The Board of Commissioners never approved or authorized advertisement for this meeting. There was an ad in the paper that said the Board of Commissioners would do this. The title of the article, the notice was Notice to Taxpayers of Hearing. It didn't say public hearing. So one, this, there was no public notice given to taxpayers of a meeting lawfully, and then just the notice that was given, well, I don't believe was even worded proper. So...
I think that if the, if the only alleged defect is that it did not include the word "public" before "hearing," I don't think that that's material.
Okay. And what about the concept that the board never authorized this advertising, which is something we always authorize any department to do by public vote? Later, we're gonna authorize the health department potentially to take RFPs.
I don't think that that also is substantive, because the substantive action is whether you take action or not. So authorizing the notice causes the matter to come before the, before the board, it does not authorize the action, only the board can authorize the action that's being noticed. But the act of noticing that is not something that required a full board approval.
I, I would think that it would, and I'd hate, I know when the recent, well, as recent as last year, that came up at the Solid Waste Department, that the public hearing for the tax increase wasn't properly advertised, and then County Attorney, Chief Deputy Attorney, Jamie Woods, delayed everything a month to make sure that it was properly and legally advertised. Because we, he didn't want this simply challenged in a court of law by any taxpayer or citizen and have the case thrown out by, by a judge instantly ruling because improper activity by the government.
So I'm noticing that the notice was published on Thursday, January 17, 2019, which is more than 10 days before today's hearing, so...
Yeah, but not authorized by this board.
Well, I think that, I think...
It says, it says it was authorized by this board. But it was not authorized by this board.
I would say that the answer to that question is this, is if the board has a rule that says that there has to be a vote by the board before a notice could occur, then you would be right. If you don't have such a rule, then the President of the Board can authorize a notice for commuting to be published, not the actual, because the publisher, publication notice is just to alert the public to come forward. No one person, though, can authorize the action, that's the subject of the notice that requires the Board's approval, which has not yet happened.
It has not happened, and as you're aware, for, to accrue an expenditure, it would require two Commissioners' approval and our signature by county ordinance.
You asked me a question.
Thank you, Counselor. So therefore, I would say that interpretation says that this, no vote on this matter is valid today, if there was to be a vote in favor or against.
That's not my opinion. My opinion is that the notice is valid.
That is, your, your interpretation of, of, so my, my question then is this. I, I believe that we're valid to take action in, with my interpretation of what Counselor said. Now, the question is, though, the, how, the authorization of the advertisement for this, I don't know that any Commissioner formally advertised this.
Okay.
I think it was, I mean, I was aware that it was, I mean, we, we talked with the Auditor and they were, and Mr. Dalton, and we're gonna file this. So I, so I, that's the piece I don't know, does it, does it require? Because it's an action taken by the county collectively, both for action by the Board of Commissioners and then also action by the County Council. So I don't know that we need to formally take action to advertise this because it was being done at the county's behalf, and then we take a part and Council takes a part.
I think it was kind of clear, and one of Counselor's definitions of his interpretation was that the President of the Board of Commissioners could have authorized, which was something I disagreed with, but that was seen to be his opinion.
Why don't we let Counselor, even better than your interpretation of it, say, well, listen to what he says?
And as you just stated, you have not had so...
So why don't we listen to what he says, versus to what you say he says?
I, I think the matter of whether or not the notice was authorized is something that can be addressed by ratifying the giving of the notice. So that if you want to take action today to ratify the giving of the notice and then proceed to consider the matter, you can do that, if there's a question about whether or not the notice was authorized.
Okay.
So there are, and I haven't looked at this particular issue, because I wasn't aware of it in advance of being up here, but there are certain actions that are, where the notice for them, and will, there's an issue that's gonna come up early, where this is gonna get addressed, where the Auditor gives the notice. And I don't know if that is something that happened in this particular case, if the Auditor asked this to be on the agenda for today, or if there was a specific...
When had been...
I think, Ms....
Right.
Apologies, and I'm not aware of the, all the ins and outs of it, but I mean, it was, we proceeded with the, what we presumed would be the knowledge of the Board of Commissioners with this action. So there was, if, if anything, at least a tacit understanding, tacit approval, if it wasn't formal. So it wasn't as if, my guess is that this, this isn't the first time that these folks are aware that we are asking for this, that we are gonna be up here doing this. So it was, we proceeded according to what our financial consultant told us to do, and here we are.
So, so the fact that the notice was given, there may or may not be people here in response to that, I think that if there's an issue, again, in the minds of the Commissioner Board collectively as to whether or not this is authorized, you could choose to ratify the giving of the notice and then proceed to consider, or I, I think you would be allowed to do that in law, or you could decide that if there's confusion about having given it and you wanna postpone this, I don't know what the timing effect does on this, that's, that's the prerogative of the Board of Commissioners, so...
Counselor, there are laws for due process.
Yes.
And processing and communicating with the taxpayer to try to be an open, fair and transparent government, and these laws exist for a reason. So I can understand saying that we could ratify something after the fact, but I don't think that that's really a sign of a clear, open and transparent government.
But what I believe is clear and transparent is the fact that the advertisement was made, individuals saw it, the Tribune read an article about it, so people, the, the purpose of the advertisement is to bring, make people aware of what is going on, and that in fact happened. If behind the scenes, what the, what the trigger to have the advertisement happen or not happen, that has nothing to do with transparency to the public, that's a more internal operation. I guess I would also ask Mr. Dalton, traditionally in other, this is not the first time someone has addressed this issue.
Wasn't it done by the Council, had made it...
Um, I, I cannot speak to the issue of your internal rules on who can authorize an advertisement. I can speak to spending, which Commissioner Thomas brought up. You have a budget for legal ads, so the spending is authorized under the appropriation and then you would approve the claim. You could deny the claim, but the spending has already been authorized under the budget. The Auditor requested this resolution, and it's my opinion, the Auditor would have the right to advertise on your behalf, to have it put on your agenda, because it's a request from the Auditor. You are the ones that have to act, but the advertisement has been fulfilled. Counselor, the advertisement was actually run twice in two papers. This is a unique situation, so it had to be done twice in two papers, and it was. And, just for those of you that may be having heartburn, once you do adopt, if you do, another advertisement will have to be run, and I guess today we better talk about whether you want to authorize that, that advertisement. Another advertisement will have to be run to notify the public that there was such an adoption, and 30 days will ensue in which the public could remonstrate against this rate increase, and in doing so, they would be contacting again the Auditor during that 30-day period. The Auditor cannot forward this set of documents to the state for their approval until that 30-day period has passed.
Mr. Dalton, have you had a chance to look at today's agenda?
Yes, I had a copy of it.
Have you seen the issue for the Health Department?
I will, I'll grab it.
To advertise for RFP for leased vehicles?
Yeah, I'm speaking to Mr. Dalton.
I see it.
Can you, the Health Department, very in the middle, item A, can, can you read that?
Request approval to advertise an RFP for leased vehicles.
Okay, and you've attended many Commissioner meetings, right?
Yes.
And so for permission to advertise is a very common procedure in the Board of Commissioners meetings, isn't it, is it not?
Sure, it's most likely connected to an RFP.
Yeah, or some kind of advertising.
RFP.
A legal, due process communication.
Yeah. It also doesn't happen when you vote on the budget each year.
Right.
Which is, which is a $50 million operation.
Yeah, and, and there, you know, and there, lots of dollars are budgeted, but that doesn't actually allow the expending of those dollars.
It does allow the spending of those dollars, but, but if a budget has been approved, you have the appropriation to do so, the department heads then can spend those dollars within the confines of that approved budget.
The, the money is appropriated for department heads like officials, but it still requires Commissional approval to spend those dollars.
Not to spend.
And one of the first things we do at every meeting is the Accounts Payable, Accounts Payable Docket.
Absolutely.
Which is the approval, the Board of Commissioners formally approval, the spending of those dollars.
Of the claim.
Of whatever the claim is.
Right, and were you to turn down that claim, you could be sued by the contract holder who, who had provided those services.
Because that, that money has already been spent.
Right.
So we, that's, so the Accounts Payable Docket, money has already been spent because, because they have, the department head has the ability to spend the money that's been budgeted in their account.
Right.
We are merely formalizing the end of that process.
We are allowing the payment of a bill.
Right, so you can always not allow the payment of this afterward, but that's not, we're not talking about the same thing.
Well, why do you think the, why do you think the Health Department is here today? And why do you think...
Because that's a contract that they do not have...
Has ignored numerous other advertising requests.
Because, that is true, because the Auditor does not need
Right.
The Board of Commissioners' approval or the Council's approval to bring this forward. The Auditor initiated this, and then it comes to Board of Commissioners for final action and Council for final action.
Right.
Mr. Dalton and Gap, General Accounting Standards Board...
Do you disagree with that?
Isn't it true that one of the principles is...
I'm speaking to you.
I'm talking to Mr. Dalton.
I was talking to you, actually before you talked to Mr. Dalton, I asked you a question.
And you were talking while I was talking to Mr. Dalton then as well.
Let me know when it's my turn.
So generally, Gap, generally accepted accounting principles, wouldn't consistency be one of those principles?
Absolutely.
And it's been a pretty consistent principle of county government, as is the ordinances, that the Commissioners approve the expenditures.
I, I think that your jump of logic from Gap to local statutory home rule may be a bit of a jump. Gap does, Gap does ask for consistency.
They're two different bodies, but just the fact that the, the common sense of that, plus the law is in place.
I don't know that the law is in place, I think there's some dispute over that. I can tell you that your request for approval of advertising for RFPs most likely deals with contractual law.
Right.
The resetting of a rate is not part of contractual law.
What part of contractual law do you think we're authorizing, sir?
You're authorizing people to give you proposals so that you can move into the negotiation for a contract.
And we're, well, we don't have to get into negotiations to contract, we're just giving permission to advertise, period, nothing more, nothing less.
So anyway...
Nothing may happen from that. We are appropriating the expenditure, as Commissioners must appropriate all expenditures.
No, the, the request for approval of advertisement is not an appropriation of expenditure. It's already been approved by you in the budget last, last fall.
And we don't appropriate, we appropriate very few expenditures. Council appropriates expenditures.
The money was appropriated, but not authorized for expenditure. So...
I'm sorry, you don't understand.
And she said, you know, I understand all too well.
No, you don't.
Some people like to skip government and take away people's rights, and I think Mayor Pete said it very well last week when he was in Washington, that federal, state and county government is not working properly. That city government is the one that seems to be carrying the weight across this nation, and one thing that I see is common in federal, state and county government is Republican leadership, or lack of leadership, lack of good leadership.
Okay, all right then, so...
Sorry, you think that.
We have a, so let's see, we've got, Jessica, if you'd please discuss what we're gonna potentially use this funding for.
Good morning, Jessica Clark, county engineer with offices here in the County City Building, room 732. I just kinda wanna give you a reminder, on the major cumulative bridge fund, what these, this fund specifically is used for is it is eligible for use on structures that are 200 feet or more in length. So throughout our county, we have about 24 of those. The majority of them are going to be river bridges, railroad grade separations and/or a few other structures, but mostly, or over the toll road, we have a few that are also over the toll road. So these are major transportation corridors that this money is used on to keep these bridges in a, in a condition that are functional and retard their deterioration rate. Based on our most recent bridge inspections, which were required by the federal government to complete at a minimum of every two years, depending on the structure, there could be additional frequency, we have approximately 12 structures right now over the next five to six years that we need to do major rehab and repair on. Those dollars plus the annual maintenance that needs to be done to keep those bridges operational and functional is approximately $13.1 million. So the revenues that we currently collect are short of that to be able to build that program. These are needs that need to be completed and, again, would encourage the Board's support establishing or reestablishing that major cum rate so we can continue to use those dollars to fund our, our bridge program, and most specifically, our bridges that are that 200-foot in greater in length. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, since you asked, I'm, thank you, county engineer.
I'm shocked.
When, obviously, when money goes into this fund, as you mentioned, it can only be spent on these certain things.
Correct.
So it's like a, it's like TIF money or other sequestered money, it's, it's for that fund only.
Current and annual code, there is strict guidance on how those expenditures... Current NICO, there is strict guidance on how those expenditures are used.
If money was in the general fund where it's unrestricted, it could also be spent on bridges as well, correct?
If that was the priority of the elected.
If the money was unrestricted, it could be spent anywhere. It could help children suffering with lead poisoning. It could help buy new radios for the county police, which we know are needed before December thirty-first. It could do a lot of things. And just for, just for reference purposes, thirteen point one million seems awful low. Is that just the twenty percent match? Or does, have you already deducted the eighty percent match from the federal government?
These are only for those twenty-four structures, and this is based on the inspection of those for repair, rehabilitation, and maintenance needs.
So is that the hundred percent figure, or is that the twenty percent figure?
That is a hundred percent figure, yes.
So in theory, the thirteen point one million, eighty percent would be paid for by federal grants.
Not necessarily, that's the only, we are, not necessarily, no.
But most likely.
Not necessarily, no. In the next five years, we do not have any federal aid available for these types of projects. They are already committed within our area.
So not likely.
Federal and state could appropriate money.
Maybe.
That's outside of our control.
Okay.
We have specified funds that are proportioned to our area that are available that we share with the city of Mishawaka and the city of South Bend within the metropolitan area. And currently, they are already programmed through twenty twenty-four.
True, Ms. Jessica, in the last five years, how many major bridges have we repaired where we did not receive eighty percent match from the federal government?
In the last five years, we have not. We've been able to utilize the federal aid program.
So in the last five years, every one of the bridge.
Prior to that, we did not, we were using local funds. It just depends on.
Maybe the federal program didn't, uh, uh, existed because Joe Donley wasn't our great congressman.
Program existed. However, with respect to a specified fund, it is good to have that specified fund because then we're actually able to build that five or ten year plan because we know what funding is coming in with expected revenue versus trying to on an annual basis request an appropriation. Most of these projects are five-year type projects. We can't plan a, a budget going to year to year on that. We need to have monies that we know because, for example, we, we have bendix over the toll road that we need to construct, and it is about a one point eight million dollar project, and that's just on the construction part of it. With the design and the inspection, those types of things, that's not a one year's worth of revenue. We have to be able to save money over a period of time, and that's just one structure. There's thirteen of them that we need to do over the next five years. So obviously, you have to budget money through multiple fiscal years to be able to pay for the expenditures when you need to complete the work.
And I agree with you.
And the designated funds help that.
I agree with you.
For infrastructure especially.
It is easier planning anything, whether a government, a non-government, or a family. Where, you know, right now, they're paying a sex number of dollars in taxes, or other government entities that are counting on some of these tax dollars that they may lose. And what, did you say the Bendix project was one point eight million or one point three?
It's about probably one point eight million.
And that's our twenty percent figure?
No, it is a hundred percent locally funded.
Hundred percent locally funded, thank you.
And you said we only had eight hundred thousand dollars in there right now, right, Jess? From the major bridge fund?
The major Cambridge fund is about a one point three million dollar collection annually right now.
But we, I thought you said we had only eight hundred thousand.
We don't have a cash, within that fund, due to the types of projects we have and the major expenditures we have with the declining revenues, that doesn't have a cash reserve regularly that's carried over from year to year. It's, we use it on the projects that we're in the budget from, from any given year based on that revenue.
All right, so, I believe now is a time to call for public comment. Is that be correct, Counselor?
Uh, I, I would go back to the point I made earlier, if you have any, if you wanted to ratify your notice, I, I would do that, but, and then, and then ask for the public comment.
Okay, I mean, are you comfortable with that ratification? It sounds like, I don't want to put words in Mr. Dalton's mouth, so if I am speaking incorrectly, please. But that you believe that the auditor acted within lawful, within his lawful responsibilities to advertise for this?
Yes, that's my experience. It's my experience that the president of the Board of Commissioners can take anything off the agenda and can put anything on the agenda, but that the advertisements can be often handled by the auditor's office.
Okay.
Mr. Dalton, you're not, you're not a higher tech, I mean, you're a, you're a.
No, I, I speak a lot of experience.
And Counselor, are you comfortable with us moving forward in this fashion as well?
Yeah.
Oh, co-.
I, I am, and I think, uh, my advice to the Board of Commissioners as a whole is, so that there's no question at all, take action to ratify the notice.
Okay.
A point of order by what Mr. Dalton has recently just stated though, Counselor. Uh, he mentioned that the, uh, he said the Board of, President Board of Commissioners could remove something from the agenda, is what I think he said. I'm not here to squabble that comment by him, but it reminded me that one of the few rules the Board of Commissioners has is that for anything to be on our agenda, that they will be initialed by two commissioners to be on the agenda. We might not have been aware of that.
I, I'm not aware of that.
Now, now you are so aware, sir.
Okay, but I, I'm aware that under state law, a board can ratify action that could have been authorized in the first instance, and therefore, to end any dispute on it, simply do that, and then move forward to public hearing.
So is there a motion to ratify this? Second, we have a motion to second, we have a motion to second, no comment.
I want to discuss on the motion.
That is, it, it is, it's not an issue of you not getting your hand up in time. This is not, there's no public comment at this time about this particular issue.
I would disagree, I would think at any time the commissioners have a vote, the public has a comment, right to speak.
That is, this is a perfunctory.
Procedural issue, that is, yeah.
Sir, is it not a vote by the commissioners?
It's a vote by the commissioners.
So therefore, the citizens are allowed to speak for three minutes before the, each person?
This is a perfunctory vote of action taken by the Board of Commissioners.
That is up to the commissioners whether or not to allow public comment with respect to items.
Sir, on every item on this agenda, people speak from the public.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, this is on the agenda.
So whether, if they want to add this item to the agenda, this ratification, which they should probably do before they even try to ratify it legally.
I think that if your board, fellow board wants to hear comment on this, they can, and if they don't, they don't have to.
And that would be, but, and if they don't, there'd be additional grounds, uh, if somebody was to take the Board of Commissioners to court for not properly advertising.
I, I think what's coming here, what's been forecasted is that there's going to be an invitation for the public to comment on this matter.
On the merits of this.
And that is, that's the next step that's going to happen after action on this notice. So the public is going to be heard.
So if you have a comment related specifically to the action we're about to take, you are free to make it. But if it is not, but if it does not directly relate to this, then there's no point in the comment until later in the meeting.
Well, this has been confusing, so let me clarify.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Durell, two one six seven seven Otten Road, South Bend. So I need to clarify what the action is that you're taking right this minute.
Currently, Ms. Durell, the motion is, does this board have the legal right to even discuss this matter? Has it been legally advertised? I say it has not been. Does Counselor advise them that if they make, if they want to ratify saying that they didn't need to authorize the advertising of the public hearing, then, then they might have a vote right after this.
That's not, that's not, that's not accurate.
Okay, please, Counselor.
Okay.
That's a shock.
What, what, what the act, the motion before the board right now is to ratify the giving of the notice because a question has been raised about whether or not it was authorized, okay? That is the notice of the hearing where you get to voice your concerns about whether or not the bridge fund should be increased, okay? They're not acting on that question right now. They're simply clearing up the issue about whether or not the notice was properly authorized.
Okay.
I, I happen to think that the, that personally, that the notice was appropriate and illegal, okay? I've simply advised the Board of Commissioners that if there's any doubt at all, then this, the, and this is authorized by state law, they can simply ratify it, and that makes the record one hundred percent clear that there's no question about whether the notice was authorized. That's what they're acting on. Once that issue is done, then, then the expectation is that you will be invited up here to speak about the merits of whether or not the building fund should be increased.
And that's going to happen today?
Yeah, it's going to happen, in theory, in two minutes. In theory.
In theory, but not today.
Today, it will happen in, in theory, in two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, I thought you said two weeks, okay, thank you.
Yes. No, two minutes. You're welcome. All right, so, I will recall, do we have a motion to, so what's the, what's the proper, how, how do we proceed?
I, I would, I think the motion on the floor is to ratify the giving of the notice for the hearing on whether or not the bridge fund should be increased.
All right, so does that motion exist?
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Discussion on the motion. I think this is another example of the shambolic Republican leadership we have here.
Is that the, the end of your comments?
That's it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
It's got a whole agenda to consider.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. So is it Cat Stevens, is that, uh, Shambala, or what's that? All right, so, next, we have, uh.
I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. Commissioner?
No, thank you, I believe, Counselor, that the next piece.
Point of order.
Thank you, it's.
Let me hear what, uh, Mr. Stevens.
So, the next, the next, uh, action that we should take then is to open for public hearing the comment about, about the resolution.
Correct.
Okay, so now, I will call for open public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on Resolution R two C two zero one sto- two zero one nine, establishing the major bridge fund. Please state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Durell, two one six seven seven Otten Road, South Bend. I think bridges are near and dear to everyone's heart. We're a river town, we have a lot of water here. I would never want to advocate for not taking care of our bridges. However, I do have some questions about how these monies are being allocated. And I'm wondering, first of all, if there is any information available today about where those twenty-four bridges are at. I do feel that several of our precious bridges are in the city proper. I'm wondering how.
They, even if any bridge that is within the city is still the county's responsibility to pay for.
Yes, okay.
To fix it.
Um, so I would like to see, if not today, prior to public comment at an official hearing on this.
This is the public comment for the, on this.
Okay, I would like to hear how many of these bridges are in the New Carlisle area, and how many of these bridges fall into TIF areas.
Okay.
And I would also like to know if TIF funds can be used for public improvements and maintenance on roadways, bridges, and those ramps leading up to those bridges. I do think that I have heard comments shared in the last county council meeting where this was presented, that everyone's always complaining about all those funds accumulating unused in the TIF funds. And so I think that we should be able to use TIF funds for these kinds of things. And if you want to raise taxes, do that for the other things, the many other things that need to be funded in this area that are currently also being shorted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If there are any of the folks that wish to speak, if you would not mind coming up and making yourself ready for when the next speaker is done? Name an address, please.
Judith Robleski, five one five South Mead Street, South Bend, four six six one nine. I appreciate this opportunity, thank you. It's confusing, but also slowly getting enlightened here. Jessica Clark, our county engineer person, mentioned that these are, there were twelve that are scheduled for repairs with, I don't remember how long a period of time in the future, pardon me.
Six years.
Within the next sixty, six years. So, and I think I remember her saying there were twelve structures, and that these were all in very heavy traffic areas. So I'd like to know, before the vote is taken, which of these, where these twelve structures are that are scheduled for in the next six years. And since they're heavy traffic areas, I know in our neighborhood, Olive Street is a no truck passageway to, um, uh, from Western Avenue to Sample. It's a residential, and there's a school thing there, but trucks are up and down there. And then I learned later that it's only trucks that are loaded. Now, how can we enforce that? Because you can't tell the weight of a truck and know it's loaded or not, you know? And trucks do a lot more damage than the average taxpayers' vehicles, whether it be a pickup truck, SUV, or a small old Mazda like the car I drive. So, what about these trucking industries pitching in? Because, um, reading this article in the New Republic about what happened in Elwood, Illinois, with their development, um, one stretch of, uh, a road, I think it was a state road, I think the number was Road fifty-three, leading in and out of, um, Elwood. It was repaved three times in one summer because it's of so much truck traffic.
Your time is about up.
Thank you, but I have concern about that, and I need that extra information, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no more public comments, I will close the public hearing portion of this. So Counselor, I believe the next step then is to take action on the resolution?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution R dash two dash C dash twenty nineteen, establishing the major bridge fund.
I will second that. Before we take a vote, are there any further comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Uh, yes, and to answer some of the comments by the young ladies who spoke. I'm sure TIF money could be shifted over to pay for bridge repairs if necessary. They certainly seem to be shifted over for all kinds of other projects and expenditures. Yes, a lot of the bridges are in the city limits of South Bend and Mishawaka. However, as Mr. Stanley pointed out, they are a commissioner's obligation, county obligation to maintain the bridges. However, uh, it seems the cities shouldn't help pay for the bridge repairs. You know, like Jefferson Bridge, we let them put their lights on there, uh, we let them close it when they had some kind of Earth Day. I think that the pressure should be put on the cities to help pay for this. And, and also, people got to remember, this is not, this is a, this is one shoe of two taxes that's coming. If you, if you, you see the county council not only potentially might put on this tax, which would harm all the other government entities, and also make, you know, non-city residents pay more taxes. But apparently, there's also a, uh, some people wanting to raise the cum cap development tax, which then would be an additional whammy on people. So, um, again, I'll be brief and just say that this is unnecessary and unwanted, and will cause more harm than good.
Just point one, uh, one point of clarification, the, this cum bridge action would, is only taken by the Board of Commissioners. Council would not have any, they, they would have nothing to do with this particular piece that we're doing today, but. Ms. Fleming, any comments?
Well, again, my understanding is that this is for infrastructure updating and improvement. And if you want to go ahead and not fix the potholes in the area, because oftentimes, in order to get the bridges done in the past, we've had to use money from the, the road funding. So we don't have enough money in the road funding to upgrade our roads. So if you want to maintain your potholes, or you could spend five bucks a year to help upgrade everything, maybe you could go to Starbucks Cafe and get a, get a latte, whatever. So it would be actually a good investment to upgrade our infra- infrastructure, to update our roads, to make sure, update our county, and update our customer service. It's very, very important because over the last twelve years, this has dropped down so much. We have not been able to maintain the amount of money that needs to be done. Other counties and other areas have done that, they have maintained it, but we let it go down. So now we really don't have the funding. And now it's, Jess said it's like thirteen point one million dollars in the next six years that we need. Is that correct in my, yeah? I mean, so, you know, we really, really need that. Or if the bridges fall down, and especially the one going up, you're going over to the mall, you're going over the. mall, you're going over the toll road, falls down, that's going to be really bad. So, we want to make sure that everything has gone well, does well, upgraded well, customer services well, so that people can feel comfortable, and we can improve the roads then. Because if we get good funding for our bridge fund, then we'll have money that we can upgrade the roads and eliminate the potholes, so that when you're going down the roads and the potholes, you're not going to hurt your, hurt your car like that. So, we're going to be able to improve things a lot better than in the past, because we'll have better funding. So, I'm certainly for moving forward with this, again, to update our customer service and to improve our infrastructure. Very good. Just like what the state did two years ago, they increased the gas taxes to improve, to increase their property, to increase their infrastructure, because that hadn't been updated for years either. And so, finally, now we're moving it back up to where it was. And again, five to twenty dollars a year per some people, you know, maybe buy a pizza or something, I don't know. But anyway, any comments? Jess, she had some.
I can speak to some of the questions that were asked. I have that information in my memory banks, near and dear. With respect to TIF funds, and not just TIF funds, but, I mean, the county historically has utilized other revenue sources to help with these types of expenditures. And historically, we have absolutely used TIF money for infrastructure improvements, be it road, be it bridges. One in particular, we had a TIF bond for the AM General Expansion Area that included, while the bridge itself is not specific to a TIF area, so the, the question was asked, are any of these structures within a TIF, within the legal description of those boundaries for the county TIF areas? No. They may exist within city areas, but those are not monies that we have access to. But with respect to the county TIFs, there is not one of these structures that are located in any of those specific areas. However, you can be serving that area with those types of improvements. So, the AM General Project did flow to bond to redo the Bittersweet Bridge, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand timeframe, most recently. With respect to what work needs to be done, I mean, the majority of the work is maintenance, rehabilitation, deck replacements, those types of things. Of the bridges themselves, again, I said they're mostly the river bridges, so you're talking Ash, Bittersweet, Cedar, Logan, Ironwood, Main Street, Angela, Colfax, Sample, Jefferson, Otten, Angela, those types of structures, all of them sample over the Conrail Norfolk Southern railroads, Mayflower over the Conrail Railroad, and then the, the Kern Road, Mucktrussel. Are, these are the types of structures that we're talking about. And again, we have used various revenues through the years to try to help maintain those structures, because they are large capital expenditures when we need to do work on those.
Yeah, he told me that. We had to get bonds, and so then we had to use the money to pay off the bonds.
Correct.
So, we had no money to invest in any other improvements, because we had to borrow the money, the bonds, to pay that off.
Correct.
So, now if we do this, we won't have to borrow the money so much, and we can pay it off better, and get much better, faster updating of things over the years. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir.
I believe your comments are done.
Well, Mrs. Commissioner...
Doctor, but I believe your comments are done.
Well, no, because they, they, she brought up comments earlier. Commissioner Fleming stated that, that this money might help fill potholes on our roads. Isn't it in fact that this money would be for bridges? Could actually take money away from potholes?
No, well, that's what happened in the past.
I, I believe Commissioner Fleming's point was that if we did not have to allocate funding that would traditionally go to roads to pay for bridges, then that money would be eligible to be used for roads. I believe that was the point.
Oh, is that what you meant, madam?
That's what I said.
Thank you. Good thing we clarified that one.
Yes, well, we didn't need clarification. So, my comments would be fairly simple. Number one, any, any rate increase to our taxpayers is significant. If it's a dollar, if it's a nickel, that's something that we try and do as a last resort. But I think to keep in mind is, this is the overall framework of what property taxes are in St. Joe County. In this case, the rate is going up, but we've seen in other cases, rates go down. So, if we look at a five-year window, back to Mr. Dalton's point, we have stayed within that same rough area. What, what most cities, school corporations, other entities, not school corporations, but other, well, you, school corporations too, entities do is, they try and keep that rate at a balanced level, so we keep property taxes even. We've seen a property tax reduction for taxpayers the last three years, culminating last year in one of the lowest rates of property taxes in over ten years. So, the citizens have seen the benefit of, and I will, not surprisingly, disagree with Commissioner Thomas's point on Republican leadership here in St. Joseph County. But we have done a tremendous job of curtailing spending. We're waiting until debt rolled off before we take these formal actions. We do the best we can to provide the highest level of service as we can to our taxpayers for the lowest dollar amount possible. So, I think it's through that leadership that we've been able to see tax rates decrease multiple years. So, now we're trying to balance that back up to the point where we're still, our taxes are lower than they were five years ago. So, through all this, we still maintain that, to that degree. I'm in favor of dedicating funding for infrastructure. We could certainly put this in the general fund, but then it's got to compete with all the things, the other items that may need, require work. So, I like to dedicate this funding to bridges, because it's been slowly robbed every year. A couple of years ago, we made adjustments to the tax rate to help the Health Department. We made adjustments to the tax rates to help the Parks Department, because they had, also, their rates had fallen down. So, we tried to put them back up, so we, so we redistributed the resources more effectively. As a result, the parks are in better shape, the Health Department's in better shape than they were three or four years ago. This is the same thing now we're trying to do on a very measured incremental approach to do the same thing to help address the issues that we have with our bridges. All right. All those in favor of passing Resolution R-2C-2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. All right. County police request approval of, I'm sorry, so Counselor, is there anything we need to do? Because there is the requirement of public comment or remonstration over a thirty-some day period. Do we need to take any formal action regarding that?
I, I don't think that you do.
Okay.
I think the actions occurred here, I think that...
But you'll let us know if we hit you.
Yeah, and I'll have to look at whether, we have to do a separate notice, Mike, on...
Basically, the public has three days, and if a certain percentage of folks file a petition against it, that triggers an automatic review by the DLGF. They'll look at to make sure that we dotted our i's across our t's, or dotted our i's across our t's, and they will specifically, as opposed to the end of the issue, which is what it really is related to, the advertising itself.
Okay.
That, that's an automatic thing to kind of make sure that we do our due diligence.
Okay. All right.
There was another point of order that Counselor was aware of, that just before the meeting we had a discussion on, great Republican leadership. Apparently, there's been a vacancy on the Liberty Township Advisory Board, and Counselor, we have what, thirty days to fill it, which should be February eighth?
Well, thirty days after the...
The vacancy?
Vacancy.
Which should be January first, January thirtieth? So, we've missed the thirtieth, then, the deadline?
Well, it would appear that we have missed the deadline.
Okay.
But to proceed, we need to have a notice from the auditor. That has to be done ten days before a meeting of the Board of Commissioners to fill that vacancy.
So, we need a public, notice of a public hearing by the auditor?
It's a meeting, it's not a hearing, but notice of a public meeting.
I believe we just got that, we were notified that the vacancy existed, but there was no one who came forward to wish to replace that. So, I believe we got that information February, on Friday, February first, so we did not have time to act at this particular meeting as a result.
Yeah, all I would say is...
So, we are working, Counsel, Counselor Woods is aware and is, will take the necessary action with the auditor to make sure that gets addressed.
Yep. So, then that would hopefully be voted on in two meetings from now?
At our next, at our next public meeting.
Well, that, that was, I said it was a ten-day advertising window.
There is a ten-day...
Right.
So, next week wouldn't be at...
Our, our next, our next full meeting, which would be in two weeks.
Nineteenth of February.
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor. Commissioner.
All right. County police request approval of amendment to in-touch contract.
That is a contract, that amendment that I had prepared for the Sheriff's Department to extend out the pharmaceutical portion of the healthcare for inmates in St. Joseph County, and there's been no, we do change in the contract to pricing, simply a reflection that we have a new sheriff, and this would extend the contract out to the end of the year.
Sheriff, any additional comment, or is that some...
Appropriate.
All right.
That's okay.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this approval amendment to, to in-touch contract for, for this year.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Health Department request approval of advertising RFP for leased vehicles.
Amy Ruby, Finance Manager for the Department of Health, offices on the eighth floor of the County City Building. Today, we're requesting permission to advertise a request for proposal for the leasing of fourteen vehicles. Our last request did receive one proposal, however, it was non-conforming. It didn't follow what our proposal listed it to, so we're requesting permission to re-advertise.
Any questions or comments?
I would thank you for following the county standards regarding permission to advertise, formal advertising, formal notice, reviewing bids to make sure they meet SPAC, et cetera, et cetera, follow the Buy American ordinance. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the advertisement of the RFP for leased vehicles for the Health Department.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Information Technology requests approval of tech refresh contract.
Good morning, my cam in St. Joe County Auditor with office on the second floor. I'm here with Scott Sennett, my IT Director. We're asking approval of the fourth out of the fifth year of tech refresh contracts. As you know, we implemented a program where, as opposed to buying things sort of willy-nilly, and without any sort of overall plan, we go to a leasing program, which would bring some stability and accountability to our program. At this juncture, this is the fourth year of this now that we, that we're trying to implement. We have one more year to go, and after that fifth year, then those folks who got new things in 2016 will be eligible, once those leases roll off, to get new things again, so we can upgrade our, our technology here to help our, our employees work more efficiently. I'll leave it to Mr. Sennett to describe the specific departments which are going to be targeted in 2019.
Good morning. Before you, we have...
Name and address, please.
Oh, Scott Sennett, Information Technology Director, Auditor, second floor. As Mr. Hammond mentioned, this is our, going on our fourth year of a very successful technology rollout, refresh of desktops, mobility, and other things that we need to be productive as county employees. This is the seventh schedule of that program stemming from and looking as an amendment to the master lease. This one precisely will, will encompass the Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau, voter registration, all of the county assessors, both here and in Mishawaka, as well as a mobility refresh for county council and commissioners. So, we didn't want to leave that out. Those iPads that were distributed, what, ten years ago?
This one?
Yeah, and you're still used. See, there's an ROI for you. And the, the amount of this lease is 126, 727 dot twenty-two. And the payment countersign paperwork was brought to you, I believe, by Marie, or if not, I have the signing packet here. But this has become standard business, and I consider it an enormously successful program, and, and I would, would hope that we can keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Sennett, thank you. The ninety-three twenty for, is it Sinovus ID, is that included in the one twenty-six?
Yes, yes, Dave, it is. And again, these, these folks are an enormous help.
Thank you. And Scott, could you read the first sentence of, the first line of, of your letter, dated February first?
Geez, I don't even have a copy of it.
I'll read it for, for... "At the Board of Commissioner, public hearing scheduled for February fifth, two thousand nineteen, we will be requesting that the Board approve the newest lease schedule for our already established tech refresh."
Very well read there, Commissioner Costelli.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Do, do you remember calling this a public hearing?
No, I...
Okay.
I, I inherited this, Mr. Thomas, and I...
Okay, you even capitalized "public hearing." And since, you know, those, you know, as an important process, and, and obviously, that is an important process.
Sure, I, I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to also thank Scott, you getting with Ray, and one of the issues we had from a CAD standpoint of technology upgrades within PSAP, so they got the grip, we could roll them into this tech refresh whenever it's appropriate, that I think will, will overall be a nice savings and helping PSAP function more properly.
We actually picked them up for this year, too, so...
That's fantastic. All right.
Together, that's good.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this tech refresh contract.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Juvenile Justice Center, request approval to apply for the juvenile detention alternat, alternative grant.
Cheryl Rush, St. Joseph Probate Court, Juvenile Justice Center, one thousand South Michigan, South Bend. We're requesting approval to apply for juvenile detention alternative grant for fifty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars. It's a fiscal grant, beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion for approval to apply for the juvenile detention alternatives grant.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval to apply for the Community Corrections Grant from IDOC.
Okay, so we're requesting approval to apply for the Community Corrections Grant for two seventy-eight, seven hundred seventy-one dollars. Again, fiscal grant, July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve for the JJC to apply for the Community Corrections Grant from the IDOC.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, Purdue Extension, request approval of extension contractual service agreement. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, I'm Rachel Rawls, from Purdue Extension, the County Extension Director. And this morning, in front of you, you have our twenty nineteen extension contractual services agreement between Purdue University and the government of St. Joseph County. And this morning, I am asking you to retroactively approve this, since it has already been approved by the auditor, Mike Hammond. Just to give you some background information on this, being a fairly new county extension director, when this salary amount came in from Purdue, I requested it in the county budget that was approved by the county council. And when the contractual service agreement came in, in December, I looked and saw who had signed it previously, it was Mike Hammond, and we took it over, he signed it, and I did not know the proper process for this. So, just stating that I know how to properly do this next year, but I'm just asking for your approval for this now.
Any questions or comments?
I commend you on learning that there is a due process and learning and, and working with that process.
Any other questions or comments? I noticed that, Counselor, we are ratifying this as well, are we not interesting? All right, so, is there a motion to ratify this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Next, Department of Planning, Public Works and Economic Growth. First item is the Consent Agenda, and I will note that we have irrevocable letters of credit for Westwood Canals Subdivision, New Prairie Canals Subdivision Phase Three, New Prairie Canals Subdivision Phase Four, Boulder Bay Subdivision, Stone Oak Farms Subdivision, and the Farms Subdivision. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda with the Public Works.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of NDOT LPA supplemental agreement for Otten Trail from Laurel to State Road nine thirty-three.
Good morning again, Jessica Clark, County Engineer with offices here in the County City Build, City Building, room seven thirty-two. Before you is a supplemental, number one, for our Otten Trail Federal Aid Project, is a state and an LPA coordination contract. It's revising the fiscal year in which the federal aid dollars are available for use. All the other terms remain unchanged, and we recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the NDOT LPA supplemental agreement for the Otten Trail from Laurel to State Road nine three three.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of preliminary engineering agreement for Pierce Road reconstruction from US thirty-one to Miami Highway.
Before you is a contract with Lockmueller Group to do the engineering and design services for our federal aid project on Pierce Road from US thirty-one to Miami Highway. As you, where we received those federal aid dollars, we made this election last year, and this is the negotiated contract amount, not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And these are eighty percent reimbursable through the federal aid program.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the preliminary engineering agreement with Lockmueller Group for Pierce Road reconstruction from US thirty-one to Miami Highway.
Second. We have a motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we have a series of bid requests. Counselor, is it okay if we, um, do, should we hear these independently? Can we do so as a group?
I have no objection, counselor, I would support one motion on all top items, D through, D David through I Isaiah.
Or should we, um, have one joint presentation and then vote on each item separately? I don't...
I, I think you could have a presentation on each, and then you could vote to approve all.
Okay.
And that's what we would say.
Yep.
I'll condense my presentation, as all the requests are, are similar.
You've got a list of bid requests, yes.
Yes, these are our twenty nineteen highway annual bid, material bid, uh, request. So we have material bids for traffic, paint, and signage, fuel, oil, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials related therein. Drainage pipe structures, guard rail, bridge materials, our miscellaneous aggregates, bituminous patching, and liquid bituminous materials. These are all materials that we utilize throughout our highway maintenance operations within every year. And we're requesting, uh, authorization to advertise for these bids on Friday, February eighth, and Friday fifteenth, with a bid opening for each of these on February twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, please.
Any questions or comments?
So these will be advertised as well?
Correct.
All right.
So madam, you're, you're asking for permission to advertise all these things, which is customary.
As a department head, yes. I'm requesting permission to advertise the bid requests. The bid requests for you to pay for the advertisements.
Any further comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these bid requests so they can be advertised and we get the bids in place.
Second.
A motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have an add-on for our meeting pleasure, from PSAP, request approval of amendment to Tyler Technologies' contract. Names and addresses, please.
Uh, good morning, Raymond Schultz, Executive Director of PSAP, five eight two six six Downey Avenue. Uh, requesting approval today to amend our contract with Tyler Technologies to add a CAD interface. There's a project that is supported, uh, by many, uh, fire departments in the county and endorsed by, uh, Mark Tansry on the county council uh, to enter into this agreement. Um, I brought Assistant Chief Killian from Clay Fire to kind of understa, uh, explain what Pulse Point is and how it benefits the entire county and, uh, hopefully why we will support it.
Thank you, Director, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jaren Killian, I am the Assistant Fire Chief of the Clay Fire Territory with offices located at one eight three five five Otten Road in St. Joseph County. I have nothing to disclose and I have no conflicts. Uh, the Pulse Point mobile application is a mobile application that works across all smartphone-enabled devices, uh, whether it be Android or Apple. It's an application that was created in two thousand and ten by a then-fire chief of the San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District out of California named Richard Price. Chief Price was having lunch in a restaurant and noticed that while he was having lunch, a fire engine pulled up in front of his building where he was at. Um, and he stepped outside to find out what the situation was, only to learn that there was a cardiac arrest taking place in the building that he was in. As the fire chief, he felt, uh, a little bit blindsided by the event. There was a cardiac arrest taking place in the building that he was at, he was not alerted. He was CPR trained, he did have equipment to provide assistance in that event. Unfortunately, he was unable to provide, uh, emergency assistance. So he thought that we better make use of good technology, uh, sought to find a solution that would enable people around the community to, uh, be alerted to those events. So the Pulse Point mobile application was invented about eight years ago, and it's been in service since that point in time with over two hundred and ten thousand activations. Uh, this is a program that alerts citizen responders, uh, to an event. So they would be notified at the exact same time that the fire department and emergency services are being dispatched. And if somebody's within walking distance of that emergency event, their no, their, their phone would be alerted, as long as they signed up for that. There's no obligation for people to, to apply for this application. Uh, however, we would be, we would be teaching and pushing this application out along with our CPR training in the community. It also notifies responders, uh, in the community of AED locations. Uh, so for example, if there was a cardiac arrest on the fourth floor this afternoon while we're in the meeting, out in the lobby, I would not be alerted to that event unless I had this application. With this application, I would be alerted to that as, as a professional-trained responder, I would be able to respond to that, as would anybody else in the room who had CPR training. So certainly with your, uh, consideration, we'd like to push forward with this project and make sure that our community is better protected, uh, across the board. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Chief, uh, uh, I understand that, does that might also include, uh, AED, uh, electromagnetic defibrillator locations as well?
It does also include an AED registry, correct. So as long as the AEDs are published, uh, either by the person who has the AED at their facility, or in our instance, many of the fire departments are taking that upon themselves with their community risk reduction divisions to go out, identify those locations, upload them in the mobile application, those locations are then approved, and people would be notified of the, uh, AED location in the event of an emergency. This would be something that ties into the CAD as well, so when the, uh, nine-one-one dispatchers dispatching the emergency, one of the CAD prompts that they would get within their, their call-taking process would be the, whether or not somebody was trained in CPR, and they would be able to notify that person where an AED was if they were nearby one, within walking distance. They've, they've typically said that's about zero point two miles.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Schultz, Director? Obviously a good program.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, we're gonna, we're still stuck with Tyler for a period of time. So even though it's not our favorable, favorite company, uh, it is a very favorable program. And I would think, counselor, there's no liability on anybody's part because the members are covered by their fire departments or the Good Samaritan laws.
The Good Samaritan law applies, I think, would come into play.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we did research, uh, Tyler has this, uh, interface working in five different communities already.
It works.
So it's not something that they have to design, it's something that has already proven to be effective. So there's very little risk for us.
But not designed like their other stuff that works.
I, I have no comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the update to Tyler contract for the CAD interface.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next move on to old business, we've got an employment agreement that is on the table. Is there a motion to untable or bring to the floor this employment agreement?
Motion to, so, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Mike Mish, I'm with Anderson Augustino and Keller, offices at one thirty-one South Taylor Street, South Bend. Uh, in front of you today is a modified employment agreement for Dr. William Brunzma, Executive Director of the JJC facility. Uh, I believe we've addressed all concerns, I've given you advanced copies here today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there in fact any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this employment agreement?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, sir. All right, public comments? Are there any public comments? Please state your name and address for the record, you've got three minutes to address the board.
Uh, yes, my name is Joseph Chabas, I'm at two zero eight Route Lambo, uh, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one five. I previously addressed this group about a situation with, uh, Ducom Center asking people to sign power, attorneys, and direct deposit, and I hear anything back from the county. See, I come back to see if I get an answer for that. In addition, I filed a complaint on behalf of my wife about, well, it was late September, and to date, I still don't have an answer. So I'm here to ask this body to encourage Ducom Center or their legal representative to give me an answer to my complaint. Is that possible?
We will certainly pass it along. Did you, um, I think at a last meeting, did you get a chance to sit down and talk with, uh, Jimmy Woods, our attorney?
He'd never contacted me, yeah.
Okay.
Haven't heard anything.
I, I think I spoke with you, sir.
Oh.
Peter Augustino. Peter Augustino.
Yeah, you were kind of uncloaked it.
I, I, and I asked you to, uh, I think I forwarded you some releases for some information.
Yeah, you, you asked me to release some information that, that constituted me giving you discovery without there being a cause of action. I'm not prepared to do that.
Well, I, it was information that we would need to evaluate.
That, that's interesting, because in her pre-investigation report, it talked about the very thing that we had discussed. So I don't know why you needed any further information.
I, I would be glad to talk to you further after the meeting.
That'd be great, but in the meantime, please have Ducom Center or their legal representative give me a response to my complaint. I also love to hear about what happened with that power of attorney stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi again, Deborah Dural, two one six seven seven Otten Road, South Bend. I'd like to express my appreciation to the county for all of the good work that they are doing on bike paths. I'm an avid biker, um, and I did have my hand halfway up on the Otten Trail project to make this comment, so I'm using my three, three minutes now. Um, as a homeowner, um, on Otten Road and a frequent bicycler across the Otten Bridge, and one whose property rates are going to be raised for work on that bridge. Um, and the Otten Trail, bike trails, uh, that have been going on around there, um, the Otten Bridge does not have pedestrian walkway. And it is a highly-used road and very dangerous. I have used that bridge and had to walk my bike across it numerous times. And we are encouraging biking to St. Pax Park and along the rivers. And so I would like to very avidly suggest that as part of the bridge improvement, along with the bike trails and the bicycle-friendly city, that we add pedestrian crossings, uh, accessible by a bicycle, um, to any of these bridges that are being improved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, those are very good suggestions.
Good morning, councils, uh, my name's Ken Carter. I'm the, uh, Town Council President for the town of New Coralale. Uh, before you, I passed out a statement, uh, regarding our comments, the council's comments, uh, regarding the development in the IEC area. We've been asked by the public and several businesses and news agencies for comment, so we've developed, uh, this statement, and I'll read it aloud. Says the Town Council of the town of New Coralale supports planned and measured growth that supports the town's utility investments, supports the health of the aquifer and surrounding ecosystems, and supports the New Coralale comprehensive plan, which includes the preservation of the character of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, can I ask you a question? Will you support the health of the aquifer and the surrounding ecosystems, or ecosystems? Does that mean that the, the Town Council voted to keep things more natural?
I'm all worried concerned with this contamination of, uh, groundwater, uh, or, um, unmeasured or un, uh, uncontrolled, uh, pollution, air, water, ground, uh, in, in that area.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Judith Robleski, five one five, South Mead. I just would like to know if TIF districts also include money from maintenance, uh, to roads and bridges?
They do.
They do?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, so money could be spent i- if there's a road, a bridge, any other infrastructure within the TIF area, or immediately adjacent to the TIF area. Those monies could be used and are, and are often used for upgrades and infrastructure.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I appreciate our opportunity to attend these meetings. And I have a question for Councilor Augustino after this concludes. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tough luck, we are recessed.